Welcome to the Oshkosh City Council segment of this forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Media Government TV 10. This event will also be simulcast on W O C T 101.9 FM, Oshkosh Community Radio. If you have no cable television connection, this forum may be accessed via video streaming on the Oshkosh Media website at www.oshkoshmedia.org or on their YouTube channel. I am Margie Davy, Winnebago County League of Women Voters, your moderator. Joining me on the panel for this forum is League of Women Voters member Frankie Mangeling. Incumbent candidates are Kyle Clark, Steve Herman, and Carolyn Pansky. The challenger is Lori Palmieri. The term of office for Oshkosh Council members is two years. Voters will choose three of these four candidates on April 5th. Our timekeeper will give you clues, cues, very different. And we thank you in advance for keeping your answers short so that we may cover as many issues as possible. Audience questions are welcome, so please submit them in writing to the league representative. Candidates receive the first two questions in advance, so we will start with those. The first question which you all received is tell us about your background and why you are seeking election or reelection to the Oshkosh City Council. You will have two minutes for this, and let's do this alphabetically. We'll start with Kyle Clark.
Hi, my name is Kyle Clark. I am currently on the Oshkosh Common Council. I am seeking reelection as a person who's born and raised in the city of Oshkosh. It's important to me to give back to the community that gave so much to me growing up, and I'm proud to be part of the progress that Oshkosh is making moving forward. In 2011, we had one neighborhood association. We now have 13. The city has made a significant investment in our neighborhoods through the neighborhood associations, as well as continued improvements in infrastructure, in stormwater management, and a committed fiscally responsible approach to our streets program. Oshkosh has also made great progress in economic development. We created a public and private partnership called Go E D C, or Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation, to help serve our business community, help businesses grow, and attract new business to our area. All of this is being done in a fiscally responsible manner to ensure that future councils have the same resources available to them that we are providing for our citizens now. My passion for local government and the service organization that local government represents from police, fire, and public service is why I am choosing to run again for the Oshkosh Common Council. Thank you.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. I'm Steve Herman. I'm completing my third term as a council member for the common council. My previous career was 30 years as a sheriff's deputy for the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office, serving in many capacities during my 30 years. I've been a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, born and raised here, graduated from Oshkosh North, attended U W Platteville in criminal justice, moved back to Oshkosh in 1979, and have resided in the city since that time. But I feel that I bring leadership and dedication to the council. Twice I've been elected by the council as the deputy mayor for the city of Oshkosh, and during that time, we completed a survey that we never had, a actual manual that the council uses to evaluate the city manager, how we go through that process. We've also, as Mr. Clark has talked about, we have improved our stormwater issues, our flooding issues throughout the city of Oshkosh. And there are unfinished business. We need to continue the Riverwalk. We need to get rid of the Buckstaff property, which we keep talking about, and that's close to happening. We need to continue to improve our neighborhoods, as Mr. Clark mentioned, the neighborhood associations. But we also, as part of that, are raising our homes that are bad. We just approved the other night our first home to be rehabbed by the city, turned around and sold by the city. So we're doing some innovative things, and I think that common sense approach and fresh idea approach bodes well for the city as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Lori Palmieri?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate this evening, and thank you to the viewers at home for taking time out of your evening. And vote for me on April 5th. My name's Lori Palmieri. I'm a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and I've been a neighborhood organizer for many years. I have a combination of 25 years' experience in legal, administration, real estate, and land use. More recently, I've been a consultant to nonprofits in northeast Wisconsin. I received my bachelor's degree at U W Oshkosh in urban and regional studies, and my master's of urban planning at U W Milwaukee. So my education and experience uniquely qualify me to serve in this capacity. I'm not afraid to ask really tough questions and dig in to get solutions and answers on behalf of residents. My platform is based on respect, responsibility, and resiliency. I'm running because I care about your future now, and I decided to run for city council after listening to hundreds of hours of frustrated residents. I want to be part of that solution, providing a voice for those who are a little shy about speaking up. While our current council members are nice people, I feel that I have the drive to get things done. For example, I've organized and advocated advising neighborhood associations going back to, as Kyle mentioned, the 2011 commencement of identifying and promoting neighborhood associations. I've been involved with getting blight removed and converting some of those razed homes into green spaces, advocating for community gardens. My name is Lori Palmieri, and I ask for your vote on April 5th.
Thank you, Lori. Carolyn Pansky?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having this. This is always one of my favorite things to do, kind of get the message out, and I know we all appreciate that, so thank you. My name is Carolyn Pansky, 34, born and raised here in Oshkosh, and I'm raising my two boys here in Oshkosh as well. I tell the story every time, but I purchased the house next door to my parents, so I've been in the same neighborhood now for 30-odd years. So I'm very committed to this community, and I plan on being even more committed moving forward. I am just wrapping up my first term on city council. This first two years went by awfully fast, and I'm seeking reelection for two simple reasons. I'm still enjoying myself, and I'm not done yet. Two years went by really fast when you're taking it all in, when you're learning how these things work, just the simple motions of a meeting to meeting nearly 300 city employees. So it went by very quickly, and we have things that aren't done yet. We have projects that aren't completed. There are things that we have been working on for my entire first term, and they have become pretty near and dear to my heart. So kind of wrapping things up and staying in this council capacity moving into the future. I believe that I bring a very unique, somewhat different point of view that is still refreshing to the citizens of Oshkosh. I'm not quite ready to give up on Oshkosh, and I hope that the citizens aren't ready to give up on me. So please vote, April 5th.
Thank you, Carolyn. Question number two you also had in advance. On your to-do list, what are your personal top two or three priorities for the city of Oshkosh, and why did you choose these for this question? You also have two minutes to reply, and this time, let's start with Steve.
Thank you very much. My to-do list, as I mentioned earlier, is to complete the Riverwalk project. We have the North Shore done, but we are now starting, we've completed one phase of the South Shore riverfront redevelopment, and we're doing another section across the street from Morgan Properties, and we have purchased and have an agreement on the right-of-way for the rest of that property. So the South Shore riverfront development is very important to me because I believe that it drives business and industry into the central city of Oshkosh. So that's important. Obviously, the Pioneer property is a big piece that I think the city can be a player in. We can't force development onto there, but there is a developer looking to improve the property at the Pioneer. He has a one-year look-see, and he's currently going through those phases for that development. Go E D C, as Mr. Clark mentioned, is our economic development arm in the city of Oshkosh. We believe that that organization has already done great strides and has improved our working relationship with their business and industries. And then the Aviation Industrial Park, which we have an agreement and partnership with Winnebago County. We just approved last night the infrastructure approval for that, and I think that's going to be just a huge success for the city going down the future, taking advantage of aviation in the city of Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Lori?
Thank you. Yes. While I have a long list of to-dos on behalf of residents, I'll focus on the top three. First, we need strong neighborhoods, and that includes safe, accessible, affordable housing, and healthy activity opportunities for people and families. This also includes safe, clean water, and addressing drug and alcohol issues, which continue to plague our community, as well as addressing our aging housing stock. We need to work with city staff to not just produce plans, but produce results. Second, we need families supporting wage jobs, and this includes washing our tax dollars and our TIP incentives, as well as those economic development activities and plans that are supposed to create and retain those jobs. We need to hold these plans accountable for producing those jobs. Third, we need a reliable, accessible, and efficient transportation. This includes safe routes to schools, bike and pedestrian routes, as well as transit. It also includes addressing how we handle and pay for street repairs. I hope to help shape policy on these issues through better communication to make Oshkosh respectful, responsible, and a resilient place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Carolyn?
The first one that I have down here is Buckstaff. This is one of those projects that has been kind of lingering on during my first term, and we're very close to getting it down, and it's such a tremendous opportunity when you think about the possibilities of this area and the land use. It could be anywhere from, you know, wonderful potential in economic development, but it could also bring a great quality of life feature to the area that we are lacking. So that opportunity in the Buckstaff property, once we actually do get it down, is incredible. So I look forward to moving forward with that. My second item here is, and it's a council goal currently, but the diversity coordinator here in the city of Oshkosh. Recent events, especially with the referendum, have really brought this to my forefront, that there is a lack of acceptance on opposing views. There is a lack of respect when we are opposing each other, and I think having somebody to point us in a better direction would be a wonderful asset to the city. The third one I have on here is a continue on the progress of our bike and pedestrian infrastructure. We are introducing things, more bike lanes. We've introduced share rows into the community. So as a bike rider and somebody who walks their children to school every morning, it is important that we have a strong infrastructure for those who don't drive, who don't want to drive, or who can no longer drive. So those are my top three priorities.
Thank you. Kyle?
All of my priorities relate to finishing projects we started. Demonstrating our commitment to our public and private partners through economic development and neighborhood development. We have projects in the air related to the Aviation Industrial Park, a rail spur in our southwest industrial park to help promote business and development, and to address citizen concerns about loading of trucks behind their residences on Allerton Drive. Building and maintaining these public-private partnerships have allowed us to leverage resources. Go E D C currently, for every $1 of public funds that are contributed to that organization, the private sector is contributing $2 to that organization. That's how you get things done, by finding new and creative ways to fund projects with the limited resources of government. Neighborhood associations are critical to making sure that we have the places that people want to live within the city when they have jobs here. We are working on a healthy neighborhood initiative to help promote the neighborhood associations, but also homeownership. Owner-occupied homes help protect property values in the city of Oshkosh. At that same time, you need to work with our rental community to make sure that they have the resources they need to maintain their properties to protect everybody's property values. Using funds from the federal government through the Community Development Block Grant Program, as well as the Office of Economic Adjustment, we are coming up with new ways to leverage money from outside the city of Oshkosh to further our development here. Continuing and finishing what we started is the most important thing for the city of Oshkosh. As part of that, Buckstaff. We are moving forward with Buckstaff. We have an agreement in place, but it's important to finish what we start so that we can make that property available for economic development in our city.
Thank you. In this next segment, we're going to allow each of you to ask a public policy question of each other. You will have one minute to ask the question, and then each of the other three will have one minute to respond to the question, and then you will be given an opportunity to respond to the responses. So we'll start with you, Kyle, and let you ask your question.
Government is a service organization. We have challenges in funding all of these services. As the changing dynamics between state and local government continually puts fiscal pressure on local government, how would you move forward with maintaining services and acknowledging the financial challenges and debt management required to deliver those services?
Steve, we'll let you answer first.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you. With the shift of the tax levy, which has been, the burden has been shifted from the state to the municipalities, we've had to come up with better ways to leverage our finances. Continuing to raise taxes, continuing to raise fees is not the way to do that. The council did put a 10-year, you could say, guideline on the city manager to reduce our, consolidate our debt under 70% of our budget so that we can continue to move forward with our projects, as we've talked about. But we need to look at ways to better improve our services. The public garage, the central garage, we've seen plenty of savings already with the garage by bringing all of our equipment under one building, maintaining better infrastructure. We continue to improve in that area. So I think it's important for us to look at public-private partnerships, to enhance our services, and continue to reach out to our citizens, to get our citizens involved in our boards and commissions, who can also bring ideas back to the council. The Long Range Finance Committee has given us a lot of ideas, and we've taken advantage of those opportunities.
Thank you. Lori?
Well, thanks for the opportunity to respond to that. Thanks for bringing that question up, Kyle. I also believe that we definitely need to have our, you know, public-private partnerships as part of the solution to that challenge. But one of the other things I think that we have to look at is things like our C I P, our capital improvement budget, and looking at reprioritizing how we spend our money, and also, you know, with our budgets, to look at more opportunities to pay as we go or introduce less debt into the equation. And I think that, again, agreeing with Steve here, that our boards and commissions can be helpful, and our residents absolutely should have a voice and say in how that's managed.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Well, and what Steve had, going along with what Steve had said as well, as a current council member, we have given our city manager direct goals to keep new borrowing down. But we do look at our C I P very carefully. We do now prioritize, Long Range Finance came out with a new system of prioritizing our C I P, so we do take that into consideration. But sometimes, a council member just sitting down and looking at things. My very first year during the budget season, I found a project that was carried over that we didn't need to fund anymore. So right away, I had saved $30,000 on some security items for the Transit Division. So just having eyes, look at these things, and somebody who is very budget-conscious in their own personal life, bringing that sense of budget to a municipality like this can be very rewarding.
Thank you. Kyle, would you like to follow up?
I would appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. The Long Range Finance Committee is critical in this process. In my time on council, the Long Range Finance Committee has brought forth a capital improvement plan scoring rubric to allow us to look at everything from how many citizens are being served by a particular project to is the critical portion of that infrastructure failing? Is this something that can cause a health and safety hazard? And the Long Range Finance Policy on Debt is also driving our decisions down the road to make sure that we look down the road, that we don't take short-term solutions. We built the Public Works Field Operations Facility to lead Silver Standards. $19 million investment in our personnel, in our equipment, has saved us on maintenance. It's saving us on energy. Those savings will put the city in a great financial position down the road. By gaining efficiency, we can deliver the same services with less resources that are provided to us.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, do you have a question for your fellow candidates?
Sure. Should the city's strategic plan be a driving force for the direction that the common council takes, along with the city manager and staff, for developing the budget and the C I P?
Ms. Palmieri?
Yes, I absolutely believe that the strategic plan should be a guiding document for that, and specifically referring back, you know, Kyle mentioned the scorecards. But I did review the new priority system with the C I P, and what I found was there were some inconsistencies in what we say our priorities are in the strategic plan versus what we say or how we categorize certain priorities in the C I P. So absolutely, I do think that those should be working together.
Thank you. Ms. Pansky?
Thank you. Yes, I believe in the strategic plan, and it's not just specifically that document. It is the experience of putting that document together. When we sit down in that room with city staff and our city manager and all of us are together, you can really kind of get the sense of what your priorities are and how to work together to accomplish that. It comes out to be a very well-done document, and it should be something that we stand behind and believe in for the duration of that strategic plan.
And Mr. Clark?
The strategic plan is the guiding principles of every decision made on this day. The strategic plan is a document designed to create measurable and demonstrable results through discussion and leadership. When we make a policy decision up here, the time and effort that's put into the strategic plan serves as our lens. It helps us to ensure that every decision we make up here is what the citizens want. The citizens drive our strategic plan through our election and what our platforms are, to public feedback throughout the course of that process. When you get everyone in one room and have the discussions, that is the most critical portion for every decision that comes after that. That's why when we developed the strategic plan last time around, we focused on demonstrable results and measurements that we could accurately account for throughout the entire plan. It is the critical strategy to maintain a long-term goal in short-term decisions.
Thank you. Your follow-up?
Yes, thank you. The strategic plan is the force, as the other council members and, as Ms. Palmieri said, it gives an opportunity for staff in the city council to work together. When I first got on council, there was a lot of mistrust between the council and staff. And I think through the strategic plan, we've been able to work through those differences and put priorities together. Some of those priorities are neighborhood initiatives, some of them are taking care of our own infrastructure, our own facilities. A lot of times, we're discussing issues, the school districts, one of their biggest issues is not taking care of their infrastructure. So the strategic plan is a driving force, and every quarter, we get updated reports of what's been taken off of that strategic plan, and every year, we get back together on it with staff to improve it and find new areas to make strategic issues important to the citizens of Oshkosh, to the council, and to the city manager and staff. So the strategic plan is our driving force, as the other candidates have said. So it's an important piece. Thank you.
Okay. Lori, do you have a question?
I do. I do. So as many of you have seen on the news, in recent months, there's been coverage, much coverage, on the Flint water concerns over lead pipes. If you believe that timely and accurate information coming from City Hall might have prevented that, my question for the candidates are, we have 27,000 housing units in Oshkosh, of which 75% were built before 1980, according to my research, and this could be possibly as many as 15,000 presumed to have lead pipe hookups here in the city. What would your plan be to identify the exact number, and what would you propose to residents about how to fix the situation so that we don't end up having that kind of issue here?
Carolyn?
Well, my trust, first of all, will go into Steve Brand, and, you know, that's their expertise, is water treatment. So I have to have faith in them that they are taking care of the systems, they are properly treating and maintaining our systems, they are doing the proper testing to make sure that something like Flint would not occur here. In the event that something would occur here, accountability would be huge, but first, we need to make sure that our residents are safe and that they would have access to potable drinking water.
Thank you. Kyle?
Water concerns and infrastructure are a critical backbone for any city, any municipality to provide. Timely and accurate information is important, and that's why our water staff does testing on a regular basis of the water that is coming into the plant, as well as going out of the plant, to ensure that our water system is safe, not only for drinking, but also for fire protection. The water towers throughout the city are critical for our men and women to be able to deliver critical services. If we're going to fight a fire, we're using water that came out of our plant. The water distribution staff is always evaluating new technologies and changes in standards and practices. We are constantly briefed by the city manager through his reports of the changes that are going on and ensuring that we're delivering a quality service. Water reports are always available. I got mine with my utility bill. That's critical. Flint won't happen here because the city is timely and efficient in managing its resources.
Okay, you sound pretty sure of that. Steve?
Thank you. Drinking water is number one source that we need to make sure is safe and secure for our citizens of Oshkosh. Part of our street reconstruction helps in that area. As we do a total street reconstruction, our water mains are replaced. So if there is lead piping, that's already being replaced. As Mr. Clark mentioned, we just recently got a report on the city manager's newsletter of what the water department is doing to make sure that we have safe drinking water for the citizens of Oshkosh. And monthly, or almost every council meeting, we're seeing us buying chemicals for the water treatment plant so that we are assured that our facilities are up to date and that the drinking water is safe and secure for citizens of Oshkosh. And they're the professionals, they're the engineers. We just recently approved purchases of some more water softener-type equipment that, again, makes our drinking water safe for our citizens. So I'm confident that what happened in Flint will not happen in Oshkosh.
Response, Lori?
Sure. I actually had several conversations over the last few days with the county health department and also our water distribution plant personnel. The city currently replaces lead pipes with copper as the streets and sewers are being replaced, which we're pretty far behind on that, okay? But they only replace it up to the curb. This leads, this can lead to, when those are replaced, spikes in the lead coming into your home because frequently, they do not replace, the homeowner does not replace, from the city connection to the home. So while it may be eventually replaced in a number of years, it only takes it up to the curb. And so I think that, again, the information that I received is that there is an unknown number of lead connections between the curb and the home, and we need to have notification to homeowners that they may or may not have that, and a way to identify that, and a way to test- way to identify that and a way to test it at the tap.
Thirty seconds, Kyle.
Thirty seconds. At our recent meeting this week, we actually approved connecting some town of Oshkosh properties to city water for a temporary connection because of the possibility that we could affect their wells and the safety of their wells. So we are proactive in that. The most important thing to prevent lead from leaching in pipes is protecting the water chemistry. So testing the water is the most important part and that's what happened in Flint. They didn't test the water chemistry and that caused the issues of the lead leaching. So as long as we are maintaining our system properly and continuing with our backflow prevention procedures, which was also on our most recent council agenda.
Thank you. Okay, Carolyn, do you have a question?
I sure do. The Washington DC Council unanimously approved last month a plan to pay criminals to not commit crimes. Is this something you would support? Why or why not?
Lori?
Yeah. Okay, so, I'm sorry, the Washington DC Council on...
They approved a plan to pay criminals to not commit crimes.
Okay, I see. I would definitely want to look into that a little more. That's a first, that's definitely a first. I'm not sure that I would support that fully, perhaps in part, but yeah, I definitely would want to look at that in a little more detail. That's really all I have to say on that.
Steve?
Thank you. I would not support it. First of all, we would not have the financial means as a city to probably afford that, but it goes deeper into the root cause of the crime. Most crimes are committed by people that have drug and alcohol issues or mental health issues and we need to get to the root cause of the issues and what's causing those issues and those problems. I can remember from my days at the sheriff's office, we would have three, four generations of families incarcerated in county jail and a lot of it had to do with drug and alcohol and mental health issues. The Northwestern is doing the Kids in Crisis documentation. It's known that we have mental, big mental health issues in the Oshkosh, Winnebago County area. And I think if we address the root cause and have effective law enforcement programming, mental health programming, drug and alcohol abuse programming, will reduce our crime rate and we won't have to pay criminals to not commit crimes because they commit the crime to feed their drug habits in most cases. So I would not support it.
Thank you. Kyle?
Innovative solutions are part of law enforcement. This is one that I think is a little challenging to accept, but incarceration is a costly proposition for multiple forms of government. The services required to address an incarceration could be utilized in more creative fashions to address issues of mental health or substance abuse or chronic cycles. When you asked this question, I came back to the motto of our police department, know us before you need us. Being actively engaged in the community, our offices are able to build relationships. When we can build the relationships and invest time and effort in a community, we won't have to pay a criminal not to make the crime because we can prevent the crime to start with. And providing the services in a cost-efficient and effective manner to address the underlying issues in crime prevention, substance abuse. In our community, a lot of crimes are related to the drug trade with heroin and the downward spiral that can cause in people's lives.
Carolyn, a response?
Sure. Well, the cost savings is where I would support this. You can kind of, we would have a little bit of creative freedom if we were to bring this into our community. I'm not proposing that we do, but I had $30,000 down here for incarceration versus, let's say you're paying somebody per monthly meeting if they meet requirements and you can pay them for not committing crimes during that time period. If you pay them $1,000 a month, that's $12,000 a year versus that $30,000 for incarceration. Not to mention giving somebody an opportunity, you know, where they might be able to now see a doctor or get the root cause of this problem diagnosed properly, get on proper medication and now have the funds to do so. Perhaps there is an underlying cause. So I think it was just an interesting twist, something that I don't think we have ever thought of doing. And I just, I thought it was an interesting topic of conversation, so. I could support it, but I think there would be a lot of work to do and a lot of tweaks to be made in this process.
Well, I would volunteer for a pilot project if you'd like to pay me to not commit any crimes.
What do you have in mind?
I'll think of something. Do you have a question for our candidates, Frankie?
Yeah, I thought you were going to start, but I'm going to ask this one then. You mentioned the diversity, one of you did anyway, so I'm going to ask, do you support the addition of a diversity coordination position to city staff? That's an easy one to answer, but here comes the rest. If not, why not? And if so, what should be the first two or three responsibilities listed in the job description?
And you will each have one minute to answer this. We'll have another 10 seconds to make notes. Okay, let's start with Kyle.
I was one of the council members who brought forward the conversation on diversity. When it came to defining what diversity was to our community, Deputy Mayor Tom Peck and myself organized an event to try and get some feedback and a starting point. If you're going to create a position in government of a diversity coordinator, you need to understand what diversity means to a community. Understanding where we come from and what our goals are in the community and what diversity means to us is the essential task that we have to complete before we create a position. If we create a position of the diversity coordinator, is it something that belongs in city government or is it something that belongs in the county health department? Is this a public and private partnership where we can leverage the assets of the school district, the county, the city, our business community? So I do support the creation of a diversity coordinator position, whether that is in city government or in a more appropriate location. I think it's critical for us to have the discussion and that's why I was a partner with that discussion.
The diversity coordinator came up during the budget at the last, in the 13th hour and I think the council made a wise decision to refer to a goal of the city manager to investigate what that diversity coordinator position would look like. As Mr. Clark said, should that be, you know, like Appleton has it under the mayor's office, should that be under the city manager's office? Or should that be a shared position with Winnebago County, with the school district, with Oshkosh? And then maybe, you know, a public-private type partnership to afford it because adding positions costs almost $100,000 or more to the city budget. So what would that position look like? What would that person be? It would have to be all-inclusive. It would have to, a person that would have to be able to do some education of what diversity is, go out in the community, educate our workforce, educate the community. And diversity, is it all-inclusive? Is it a black and white issue? Is it a Hispanic issue? Is it a Mungu issue? Or is it gay, lesbians, transgenders? So until we really know what it all is, it would be hard to put a job description together, but I would support it if it makes a lot of sense for the city of Oshkosh.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes, I absolutely have felt for a long time that this was needed here in this community and I would support a diversity coordinator. I guess the first things that come to mind that I think that person should tackle would be, again, you know, referring to what Steve was saying, you know, gathering information and identifying the issues and kind of, you know, quantifying that with some data and also some, you know, qualitative information. But then also, you know, it's a human resource issue and as well as a financial issue. And I'm just wondering if it might not be something that would be more appropriate for an outside consultant that had, you know, part of that job description was also seeking grants that support that as well. So in that way, I could see supporting it as potentially an outside consultant. I wouldn't say it for sure, but that's what I would look to.
Carolyn?
Yes, I do support the position of a diversity coordinator here in the city of Oshkosh. I think there is a need for somebody in the community. The first two things that I wrote down when you mentioned responsibilities would be to unite and to educate. I think education is the key here, but I am comfortable with the city of Oshkosh taking this on as a city employee. We have worked successfully with the Oshkosh area school district and Winnebago County before, such as our three waves, the health clinic. I think we can all come together and do this in a responsible manner and take care of the needs in our community.
Thank you.
Sure.
I know. This is an easy question. I'm not sure the answers are, but what is the biggest problem facing the city of Oshkosh today? Carolyn?
Funding. Money, 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 money. There's never enough.
Easy answer.
Yeah.
Lori?
I believe, I would say timely and accurate information coming out of City Hall coupled with citizen engagement, that sometimes we need to have more of that in order to inspire more people to be actively engaged, which adds to the resources, maybe not necessarily in the financial sense, but more, you know, heads and hands working on some of our challenges.
Thank you. Steve?
I think our biggest problem is the budget. And as Ms. Pansky mentioned, you know, funding, the state has cut a lot of our revenue sharing and so how do we continue the services that the citizens of Oshkosh are expecting from us with less money? So we do have to start thinking more creatively and how can we better not always pass the buck onto our citizens to continue what we're currently trying to do. So I think the budget issues is the most and that's why we start the budget process now in July because of that. So we have plenty of workshops, so by the time the budget comes through, we pretty much know what the mill rate's going to be, what the tax rate's going to be. And I think we have shown to be prudent in ways of getting the budget through and not having to have to cut services for our citizens.
Kyle?
The importance of service delivery and finding ways to fund those services are the critical problems that the city faces. The biggest challenge is the continued changes in funding sources. There's a reason that a lot of our direction to the city manager focuses on analyzing our fee structure to make sure that we're not passing the buck onto our citizens for the changes that have happened in the stormwater rate or the recycling fund or the payment for municipal services from the state. Those changing relationships are ways that we have to manage in the budget to continue to deliver quality services. Our citizens demand quality services and it is our duty to deliver those services while watching their money, spending their money in the most efficient way possible. The Public Works Field Operations Facility is a prime example of us looking for efficiencies, investing in our workforce to continue to deliver services with more limited resources. Balancing the budget is the most important thing we can do as a city council.
Thank you. You have a question, Frankie?
Yes, I do. And this is, touches on sustainability, which is, by the way, one of the LEAGUE studies for the next year or two. There are many municipalities that are diversing themselves of their investment in fossil fuels. And so my question basically is, do you think Oshkosh should do this? And you should be aware that the fossil fuel stocks have dropped by 20% while development opportunities, while divestment opportunities have increased by more than 300%. And just in the news a day or so ago was the announcement that the Rockefeller Family Fund, which we all know was started with all the oil money that they made, they have called morally reprehensible to continue to explore sources of hydrocarbons and have divested their assets of that. So, bottom line, should Oshkosh divest itself of investments in these investment stocks and bonds that involve extracting coal, oil, and so on and so forth? Yes or no? And then why? Kyle?
A comprehensive plan for financial investment is why we created the Long Range Finance Committee. They are already evaluating the proper investment strategy for the city of Oshkosh and one of the questions that they are asking is, is it responsible for us to divest from fossil fuels? Sustainability in the investment pool is important, but it's also important when we have opportunities here. The Public Works Facility, I'm going to come back to again because we've realized savings by building that to lead Silver certification. So focusing on the investment strategy in the long term, but also our projects that we can control here and limiting our resources on fossil fuels.
Was that a yes or a no?
It's a yes, that we need to be mindful of our divestment strategy and the city's already looking at it.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I think it's important for sustainability that we look into that. As Mr. Clark mentioned, the Long Range Finance Committee, that's one of the things that they're looking at and bringing. I know the Sustainability Board has weighed in on that a little bit. We as a city are a leader, having CNG vehicles, our sanitation trucks. A lot of our city street trucks are all made and run on CNG energy. But as an investment strategy, I think that we all use those fossil fuels. So I think it, you know, even though the market might be down at this point, I think that investment in the long term, and that's kind of where the Long Range Finance Committee comes in, is the long-term strategy. And so that strategy, I think, is good and I think we should follow it. So I support it. Yes.
Lori?
So if I understood the question, it was, do I support...
Divesting.
Divesting from those investments that are...
That's right.
Okay, all right, so yes, my answer is yes, right off the bat. And I believe that we really should be looking at more investments that relate to alternative fuels. And the reason is because, you know, I care about your future, my kids', my grandkids' future, like now, but those are the generations that are coming on. And we can't always wait until those finite resources have depleted to respond. We really need to be looking forward and it's the ethical and moral thing to do for future generations.
Carolyn?
Yes, I would support that in a fiscally responsible manner. If this is something that is not going to be beneficial to the city, then in a financially speaking way, I would have a hard time supporting that, but my personal beliefs is that we would, we would get out of that. I am always looking for ways in my own personal home and my own personal life to be more sustainable and I would like to bring more of that to the city. I have sat down with representatives from Wisconsin Public Service trying to get the city of Oshkosh into a solar panel test project. Unfortunately, that went to a few other communities, but we are slowly getting there. As you heard, if you were watching the Winnebago County Board Forum, UWO has put panels on their newest building and I think that that is just something that we can do to slowly get out of this dependence on fossil fuels. So we, yes, I support that and yes, I have faith that we will get there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. Do you support the idea of the city of Oshkosh creating a municipal court? Carolyn, let's go the other way this time.
As a member of the current city council, we did give that to our city manager as a goal to look into that. If it is feasible for us, if it is something to recoup some of the lost revenue, then I would support that. If his findings show that we would not be successful regaining some of that lost revenue, then I would have a hard time supporting that. So I would have to wait until we have more information to make a determination on that. But right away, I would feel that I would support that. I think, I think we could be successful in that realm.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes, that's an interesting question because it's my understanding that, you know, there was some reporting recently that Nita Manashe's municipal court was in the Rad and, you know, that's not really that unusual for a court not to be completely self-supporting. And at first blush, it may seem like it would save money, but that's only as good as what they're able to collect through those municipal fines and fees that are involved. I do like the idea of decongesting the county courts and having the municipal ordinances and things like that addressed in a more efficient manner, but yes, I would want to wait and see what came back with the study as well, although even if it, I guess depending upon the findings, I would have to make... Although even if it, I guess, depending upon the findings, I would have to make that decision how I feel about it then.
Thank you. Steve?
I was a strong supporter of it. I was the one that brought that initiative forward. Retired Lieutenant Tony Duff had done a survey study of municipal court, and it appeared to be pretty cost-effective for the city of Oshkosh. We are the only municipality in the county of Winnebago that does not currently have a municipal court. That being said, that doesn't mean we have to have one to just follow everybody else. But at the same time, I do think that we struggle at times to get our zoning codes through, our violations and some of that. I think we struggle sometimes getting on the county docket because of their heavy docket on their own. So I think having a municipal court that would keep the revenue in the city of Oshkosh, and I think it can be done with a lot of staff that we currently have. And so I don't believe that it would be a real cost, cost a lot of money into our budget to have it. So I would support it. But again, that was a goal we gave to the city manager, and until we actually get his full and complete report, it would be hard to say yes or, a specific yes or no at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Kyle?
The current council gave it to the city manager as a goal and direction this year because we believe it's important for us to evaluate those options. Not only does it possibly provide cost savings from administrative fees to the county courts, it also ensures due process for our citizens, to make sure that complaints that are being heard are being heard in a timely and efficient manner. So if we can speed up due process and work with our partners to get that taken care of quickly and more efficiently, then it's a valuable investment. But we have to have more information, which is why it was a question that we asked of our fellow communities when several of our counselors went down to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference this past fall. Get feedback from other communities, learn from their example. Oshkosh is a leader in many, many areas, and this is an area that we are lacking, lagging behind a little bit. So focusing on doing it right is the most important thing in this process. So I do support the study, and I do support a municipal court if it's the right decision for Oshkosh.
Thank you.
Which one do you want me to do? Okay. Here we go. "In a heavily communicated study," and may I remind you that the former mayor, Burke Tower, wrote this question?[1276.58][1276.58](Laughter). "It was shown that poverty in Wisconsin continues to increase and that the Oshkosh area is one of the highest poverty areas outside of Milwaukee. What can and should be the role of city government in dealing with poverty?" Anybody want to start that one?
Sure.
Carolyn?
Well, somebody who falls into the lower-income bracket, myself. You do kind of have to learn how to properly stay in a budget, how to be self-sufficient. And, you know, it can't be just as simple as showing somebody how to do things more effectively. There is a lot of dependence at the state level as far as unemployment. Even in our own school district, there is a high rate of free and reduced lunch. What really messes that up, though, is the amount of fraud. And unfortunately, we don't have the resources in place to properly review these cases and weed out those people who are unfortunately taking advantage of some of these programs. So really looking at these programs and making sure that the people on them really do fall within those guidelines is of utmost importance. Because once you weed out those, you know, the fraud in there, you could have a successful program that actually does help people.
Lori?
I'd like to respond to that, too. So what should our role be at the city level? I believe that we can provide opportunities for people with limited means, and it's my understanding in our area, we're at like 13.7% poverty rate, that for people of limited means to have opportunities for using land that's not otherwise being promised or developed for purposes such as community gardens to help supplement their food needs. We need to look at providing space for alternative types of housing that would meet a minimum code, but perhaps allow for some creative ways, such as, you know, the tiny home movement or other opportunities for people to come together and provide some of their own housing. I just think that we need to be a little more thoughtful about how we use some of our unused or vacant lots.
Steve?
State statute puts the big picture under the county and the state. But I think as a city, we have an obligation to, our citizens, provide good economic jobs, get them educated, work with our technical schools, our colleges, to get those that are low-income maybe back into school, back into the workforce. I think we currently work with Habitat for Humanity on their homes and working with citizens that may not have the opportunity to purchase a home. We have, through our planning department, we have several home maintenance programs for low-income families and that. We support the shelter, the warming shelter. I would like to see a year-round shelter in the city of Oshkosh, how that, if we could have a piece of that funding piece, or work with the community foundation, or some of the other funding sources to make that happen. But I do think that we need to educate the citizens that are here of what's available for them. I think a lot of them don't know some of the services that are out there and available for them. So an education piece is something I think the city could take a big share. Financially, I don't think we're in a position to start our own programs or anything like that.
Thank you. Kyle?
This discussion came up at our discussion on diversity. Doesn't matter what your race is, what your color is, what your creed is, poverty strikes everyone. Our superintendent of school, Stan Mack, said this is the single largest determinant of success in the classroom, is your access to nutrition and the means to keep yourself nourished. So access to services, the education component of this is critical. And this is a prime opportunity for us to work with the partners in the county and the school district to develop programs that'll help us to communicate what's out there already, because the bulk of this falls under the county and state's jurisdiction. So it's out of our control. But whatever we can do as a city to help with the communication and leveraging our resources to maximize the results, to get people the resources they need to succeed in our community. Jobs are critical to that. Continuing to focus on economic development and strong housing stock is part of that.
Thank you. Well, this concludes the city council portion of the forum. The election is Tuesday, April 5th, and you may vote for three of these candidates for a two-year term as Oshkosh City Councilor. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and you may register when you go to vote on Election Day. Take a proof of residence with you. Every voter must show a voter, a photo voter ID. You can go to www.lv, LWV, like the Women Voters, wi.org for information about acceptable IDs. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, Oshkosh Media Government TV 10, and Community Radio WOCT 101.9 FM, I want to thank all the candidates and panel members, Ann Marshall and Frankie Mengeling, for participating in this forum. And in our ongoing attempt to educate the public, I also have some information. If you need a state ID, which you'll need to vote, but if you don't have one, you need to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles. And there is a way to get a ride to the DMV in Oshkosh if you still need your state ID. If you are age 65 or over in Winnebago County, you, the RSVP program of Advocat will have drivers available to pick up those who need to go. The people will be picked up at their residence, the drivers will wait for you at the DMV, and then will take you back to your home. If you need this service, you can call the Winnebago County ADRC at 1-877-866-2372 to request a ride. There is no cost, it is free. For anyone of any age in the city of Oshkosh needing a ride to the DMV, rides will be available on Wednesday, March 30th, between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon only. The rides will originate from downtown Oshkosh Transit, go out to the DMV, and then return to the downtown Oshkosh Transit Center. If you need this service, you can call 920-225-1719 before 2:00 p.m. on March 29th to request a ride. And again, that would be a free ride out to the DMV if you need to get your voter ID. And that is it. Thank you so much, candidates. We appreciate you.
Thank you to the league. Thank you to...